Hey. Okay.
Me, oh.
Alone. Time being. I'm worried about. Kind of piled some stuff. Click away. Hello? Hi all, I think I'm hearing somebody on the line. I'm curious who's there. This is Kayla. Hey Pete, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
I'm doing pretty good.
I love the fake town hall backdrop.
I know, I know. It's the, it's great cover. Nobody knows I'm sitting in my guest room.
I, uh, I called, or I looked, I called into the one that you guys had like last Friday where all the town employees there.
Yeah, I saw you on it.
And at first I got wicked confused. I was like, how is anyone sitting in the same seat in town hall? This is so weird. I was like, oh, it's just their backdrop.
Oh, that's great.
So this should be fun tonight, right?
Yeah, it should, it should. Um, I'm playing with the technology and I realized, I think. It's right in, right now, we're. We're figuring it all out as we're going and I'm a little overwhelmed, but we're. Live streaming right now, too. And I real, yeah, like so on clerk based on the agenda, if you went to live stream through clerk base, that's working too. And I was just realizing that that's on, so it was actually catching me and Josh in here a couple of minutes ago talking about laundry. Getting used to it.
So we are live streaming right now?
Yeah, yeah, I think so because. I have the live streaming open separately and it's, it's, it's running.
I see, yeah. There's a little up on my left hand side, it says live custom.
Yeah.
Yeah, sweet.
Kind of cool.
Yeah, definitely. How are you guys making it through all this? You doing okay?
Yeah, we're, we're holding it together. It's wild, wild world. Everybody's. I think everybody is like on the brink of keeping it together in crisis mode and not in the same time. How are you?
Same thing. Every day is like a new battle. So, uh, just figure it out. They change the rules, they change the game. I mean. People change the game. Some days we're working on people's houses and the next day they're like, we don't want anyone near us. Uh, so we have to stop and pivot and. You know?
It's like that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I had to lay, you know, not a lot, five people off, which is horrible for me. It's like the worst thing in the world that to lay people off.
How many people work for you normally?
Forty.
A lot of people working for you, huh?
Yeah, so over the last two, three weeks, we've been to lay like forty people off. I mean, five people off out of the forty, which is. Hard, you know, but I think another week or two, I should be able to get back into full. Full swing once we figure it out.
Yeah, that's good. Hopefully. My husband got laid off from where he is. He works, um, at like a Harley Davidson dealership in New London.
Yeah, right. Brian Harley's right now.
Yeah, exactly. They're like, it's just not, now is not the time that we're full swing getting everybody's bikes and gears for spring. It's just not that spring.
Is he service or sales?
Service.
Yeah, right, right. But when things open up, then it'll be go time, right?
Yeah, exactly. And that's what they're, he's like, so I, I wait and then hopefully May, when things open in May, we're, we're gangbusters. We're really going.
Yeah.
So hopefully.
Are they shut down in Connecticut there?
They're, well, they're funny. They're calling motorcycles an essential business.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So they're trying, they're squeaking away to keep sort of like some of the techs working, some of the things. I'm gonna, I'm gonna shift gears. I have this feeling. It's two of seven and, and it shouldn't just be you and me in here. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna see, I think. There's a way that these webinars work where you can be in a practice room first where just the people who get a special link can come in and we can get everyone's cameras set up.
Yeah.
Before the meeting, but I'm, I'm, I'm thinking. It ain't really. It ain't really happening that way. So I was wondering if I went live on it, if we'll see. People who just use the agenda link to come in who are stuck in the attendee bucket. So bear with me. I'm gonna play technology here.
Yeah.
Okay, if, let's see what we got going on here. I have. A couple of our people, so I'm gonna move. Non-reando and I see John here.
Hello, how are you?
Hey, hi John, how are you?
Good. Hey Peter.
John, how you doing?
John, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you guys, I think we've, we've got sort of a, a technology conundrum going on, which is that. I think potentially. Jay Parker is in a separate Zoom meeting room right now.
Okay.
Because he is texting me and asking me, which you can't see right here.
There we go.
There we go.
I gotta change some lighting here. Hang on.
Yeah, that's okay. I gotta figure out, I think there might be a phantom second Zoom room. That is holding a separate meeting that might have about half of our people in it. So I am gonna ask you guys to bear with me while I play, play that out.
Okay, little better. Kill this light. Ah, much better. Okay.
All right, so, um, we have, I don't know if you heard me, John, I know Peter just did, but, um, I think there's a second Zoom meeting.
Going on?
Going on because Jay just texted me and says, we're, we, a few of us are waiting for the meeting to start and we've clearly already started this one. I see, um. We actually have like Carol Baker from the planning department in here as an attendee, uh, Jamie Murdaugh. We have a couple of members of the public here too, so. Um, I'm just gonna sort of ask everyone to be patient with me. Give me about two minutes here. I'm gonna put you guys on mute, figure out what's going on and try and get us all into the same space.
I, I guess before you do that, just check the, um, the via computer number, you know, the, the nine digit number. Make sure they're logging in with the same number that. You have on the agenda. Right at the top here.
Right, right, right. Um, and I think when you. John, when you came into the room, I'm asking because you came in and you. Grouped into the attendees bucket and then I pulled you over so that we can see your cam and hear you. Um, do you, when you came in, did you use? Uh, like the special email link that came to you, or did you use the agenda link and I moved you after?
I used the agenda link.
Perfect. It, it worked well. It didn't cause us any troubles. He, you on the other hand, I think use the special link from. Like a invitation link to, to you?
Uh, I went on the agenda and just copied and pasted it into my browser.
Okay, so you did the same thing. Perfect. So that's what's going on.
That's what's happening.
Yep, okay, so bear with us. Um, for the members of the, the public we have on the line, it's, we have a few. I just wanna let you guys know. Yeah, I'm give, I'm Kayla Graham, the planning director for the town. Give me about two minutes here. We're gonna try and get everyone in the same room. We've got our chair and one planning board member here and a few others in a separate room, so bear with us.
It's bedtime. I usually don't get to see this at planning board meetings.
You and I followed the right instructions, the agenda. How are you? You ready for nap? You ready for nighty night? Like, who's that man? Who's that man on the computer?
How you guys making it out with all this, John?
You know, one, one foot in front of the other. We're doing okay.
I know. I was, uh, I was on a call with one of your colleagues the other day.
Oh yeah, he mentioned that to me. Yeah, it was, uh, who, who were you talking to? Uh, was it Dan Price?
You know, I don't think.
You, you did a bridge loan?
Well, we were, I was just trying to understand what happened. We applied for it and we never got it and find out that it's coming out this week or something, I think, so.
Okay, yeah, cuz those were moving really fast, like literally in two to three days, we're getting them out the door.
That's awesome.
And by the way, they're capped at, uh, five thousand, just so you know.
Okay, yeah.
It's, it's just that, it's a bridge loan to your SBA until your SBA money comes in.
Yeah, I don't, I think we applied for the ten thousand dollar one, the thousand dollar per, the ELI, that one.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's the freebie. That's a grant. Yeah. Okay, well, you, you could do both and you don't have to take the other funds, but at least your application is done.
Gotcha, gotcha.
You know, so even if you wanna go back in, you could apply.
Which one is that?
This was SBA, so you did a couple on the SBA side. Hey Pete, hey Jay. Yeah, I, we can talk later offline.
Yeah, we're also live streaming on the internet, so.
Gotta be careful then, huh?
Hey Jay, it's Colleen Camp. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Listen, I was just joining your meeting, like I thought I was logging in just as an attendee, not to, um. Not to pop into your meeting, but I was, just wanted to watch, right? So to help us with council stuff, but, um. I see I'm. Here, so. You need to, is it because I'm logged in? Hey guys, is it because I'm logged in? I'm logged in as myself, my C camp, but. Maybe because of my admin or whatever, like our user privileges?
It's probably because you're. Oh yeah, maybe, yeah.
Do you wanna just, um, make me an attendee though? Cuz that's all I wanted to be. I didn't wanna. Be part of this. I just wanted to watch from the attendee side so I can see for the council. Or do you want me to just log off? I don't wanna.
Yeah, we can boot you.
Yeah, right? You, you should do that for sure. You wanna do that, right?
Yes, I, I, I will do that and then we will. We will work through the other technology issues we got going on, but Colleen, nice to see you. We'll see you a little later.
Okay, bye.
All right. Okay, so, um, I, I think we've sort of figured out what's, what's going on here, um, gang on the call, so. For, um, for the. For Peter and for John and for, um, the attendees we have in the room. Um, I'm gonna just sort of describe to you guys what I think we have going on technology wise, because the easiest way to figure it out. Um, I think what basically has happened is we had. These two parallel Zoom meetings set up, um, and I think. The people on our planning board who have used the meeting invitation that came specifically to everyone, um, for the meeting are in a separate meeting room. So what I'm gonna do right now, um, in order to sort of fix that, really what I'm gonna do right now is I'm gonna email them all. Everybody on the planning board saying FYI, if you're in a room or in a meeting that hasn't started yet, please join us here with the links to come meet us in this room. Um, because this is our publicly posted agenda. This is where we have the members of the public joining us, so. This is sort of why we do a practice, technology practice session, I suppose, right? As so that we can figure all of this out when there's, when there aren't a lot of people waiting in the wings to get something done. So, um. You may see me leave the room, um, the meeting room. I have, like, I basically put it so that Jay has all of the same. Zoom permissions. I think it matters less to you all, but Jay will stay in the room. I am likely gonna maybe leave this meeting room and go into the room therein and tell them all to leave that one and come here, so.
Got it.
All right.
You're literally teleporting, Kayla.
I'm doing my best to teleport, so let's see if it goes.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what got mixed up cuz on my calendar, I have it, um, as a different. Meeting ID. And there's nobody in that room. And that was the one that came from Kayla, I was pretty sure, but.
I just got a text from Maria. Telling her to log in via the agenda. Login credentials. Hey Brian, how are you?
No, I don't like that.
There he is.
The sun shining on me. Ryan, did you have a hard time getting in?
I wasn't muted a minute ago.
Did you have difficulty getting in?
Uh, I did. It, it wasn't letting me in. It wasn't letting me in. I, then I emailed. Kayla for a new link and then I finally gave up and just clicked on the, uh, the link in the agenda and got through that way.
Me too.
I guess I've been using Zoom too much. I just, I just call it up and I put in the ID number and it just pops in. It just goes.
Hi Amy.
Hello.
Hey Amy, how are you?
Good, thanks. How are you?
Good. Welcome to the Coventry meeting.
Yeah. I guess we all have the same issue, huh?
There she is.
Sorry, Amy. I forgot.
Amy, is that a mandatory background by the company? Everybody puts the South Main Street building up? You're, you're muted. Your mic is muted. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, now I can hear you.
And Andy's figured out the virtual background. I think his is a nautical theme, you know, sailing. Mike asked me last night, you know, how do I, how do I do this, so? So what was the issue? The public link worked, but the panelist link didn't?
Something like that.
Yeah, that's what it seems to be.
Yeah. All right, well, that's good. At least, um, and do we know if anyone is on from the public?
We do, yes. We have got.
Yep, I see that now.
Um, I'm promoting people as they're coming in from the attendee room into the panelist room. So Steve Demossi just got promoted. He should show up in the room and about it.
Yep, he's coming in now.
So I, I, to be honest with you, I, I don't know. I don't know exactly what, what went wrong there. I, I don't actually even think it was a duplicate meeting issue because when I. So Amy, so you're, you know, I was in the start of this sort of saying, I think we had a duplicate and we might have had a duplicate meeting issue. Like that were built sort of on the web platform side and there may have been two, but the link. For this meeting that we're all in, which is the link that showed up on the agenda, is the same one that has you all listed as panelists, so I, I, I don't actually know what, what happened. Isn't appear to be what I thought it was, and I thought it was honestly just a honest to goodness user error on our end. Um, that being said. Looking at who is here, we, Steve, how are you?
Pretty good. I just, I was, uh, trying to text you. And, uh, then I saw my phone popped up your message, cuz I had my phone on mute, so it wouldn't ring, in case I got a call during the meeting. So, but I, I was getting, waiting for host with the link that you had sent me previously.
Yeah, see, and that's, I think that's what happened to everybody. Um, so.
Do we wanna five and call the rest of the board?
Yeah, so I sent an email to everybody about two seconds ago and we're sort of, I think, on a, on a. Publicly visible taking pause right now. We haven't called the meeting to order yet or anything. We've just been straightening out our technology. Um, I have a.
Oh, there comes Maria.
Text to Pam.
Hey, you're in.
And I have a text going to Pam, so I think.
Mike. Try speaking.
Okay.
There you go. You're in.
Yay, finally.
So it looked like the last process worked, Maria? Going into.
The link from Kayla worked, yes.
Okay.
For some reason Zoom thought I was in two meetings at the same time. Peter, how is your daughter doing?
She's doing great. She just was on the camera a couple of minutes ago.
Oh, really? Oh, too bad I missed her.
Yeah, John, good to see her, but. Good, we're getting ready. A couple more weeks, the next one.
I was, I was gonna ask, oh boy, wow. So, um, will she be delivered at South County?
Uh, women and infants.
Women and infants. Oh boy, and will you be going, but only you, or? Oh boy.
Yep.
Good luck.
Crazy times.
Yeah. Have you seen the picture from China, um, of the newborn with the plastic face shield?
That was crazy, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it first thing this morning. I was like, I wanna see it.
Good luck. How's your wife feeling?
She's doing really good. A little tired, really good, yeah. Excited.
Is she working from home or able to just rest?
Yeah, work from home. Yep.
Okay, all of the technology plot thickens as we live and breathe. Um, so. I. Here have my cell phone where I'm texting with a couple of the other planning board members to get them on the call, um. And I'm gonna describe to you what's happening because I think honestly it's our best, our best option is to. Get everybody's heads together on figuring out what's happening. Um, so what we got happening right now is that Pam is using the link. On the agenda, but she's getting the same error message saying. Please wait for the host to begin this webinar. It has not started. And so that's the same link that people who are in this webinar that has launched have used to get in here, so. So that's sort of a, that's, that's what we got going on on the backend here is initially, we thought this was like an invitation issue from user error on, on my end when I. Built this thing. Doesn't appear to be that. We have Elise who made it in now, but that's, that's great. Um, and so I'm.
Has Pam just X'd out and tried to get back in?
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna, gonna do next here is ask her to do that and then, um, we. The only other planning board member we don't have president accounted right now is, is Joe Murphy and I don't have Joe Murphy's, um, cellphone number. If anybody else does and wants to shoot him a text.
Yeah, let me, let me do that.
Thanks. Thanks. Okay, so I spoke with Pam. Pam, Pam's gonna close out her entire Zoom platform on our computer and try and relaunch everything and see if that gets us, gets us with her back in. I see Elise has joined us. And distracted.
I tried Joe at his home and I also just texted him and no response.
Okay, so I mean, I think, I think at this point, let's say we've got Pam trying to still see if she can, we can get her in on the agenda link. We'll see how that plays out, but give maybe another minute or so and see if Pam can get in. And then at this point, we have an email to Joe, a text message and a phone call. So we've sort of tried, tried what we can and hopefully whatever's going on, we can get him in here with us on, on his side. Okay, we got Joe Murphy coming in. Well, I suppose, okay, so let's, let's, let's say this while we're, we're all sort of waiting here now at twenty past, twenty-five past seven, more or less trying to get things going. I wanna, I guess basically just say kudos to everyone who has made it into the room tonight. Clearly, that was more challenging than any of us anticipated or that we've seen in any of the other meetings we've been running. I'm gonna also just say kudos to everybody for showing up on webcam. We're realizing that makes a pretty big difference to people to just be able to see a face as opposed to just a black square on the Brady Bunch, as we've been calling it. So, so far, kudos to everybody who's sort of gotten in and gotten this going. That was, I suppose, honestly, our first challenge of the night was to figure out how we all come together in this space. Looking at it now, it looks like sort of Pam is our, Pam Rubenoff is our lone member who can't really get into the room right now. We, looks like we have, we have Joe present. We don't have Joe on video, but he is, you, I can see that he is here in the room, which makes me sort of think, I don't want to go too far into sort of the technology, how things are going and what's, and what's happening here. But more or less, if Pam is sort of our only person not here, perhaps we want to begin the meeting for timeliness sake and to sort of get into the idea of playing with it. This is largely what our meeting is. And so at that point, you know, Pam can come and go from it when we can get her into the, into the room. But in the meantime, John, perhaps you, perhaps we want to start knowing that we have six of the seven of you present.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay, so with that said, if you look at page three of what was forwarded to everybody, there's a call to order. And so we recognize it is seven twenty-six and traditionally, let's do the roll, roll call. Peter DiStefano?
Here.
Very good. Steve Demossi?
Here.
Elise Torrello?
Here.
Pam, we're waiting on Joe Murphy. Again, we're waiting on and Maria Mack.
Here.
And the chair is here. So we have five members present. And by that, we do have a, and the whole purpose again was to test this platform out. Obviously, it's a learning curve and we are learning as we go along. And the other part of this, if you look at item number C, C, was again to test the technology by doing, by the staff playing the role of the applicant. And so I, I'm gonna hand it over to Kayla and also to Jay and to Brian so they can start to move forward. And Kayla, why don't you, uh, there's Pam.
Hi, Pam.
Pam, Pam is here.
Oh, I haven't, I haven't met a new senior planner, Brian.
No, 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 we haven't. Um, so, so I guess for the record, let's show Pam has shown up and also Joe Murphy is in the room, but he is, has just been on mute. Joe, are you unmuted in here with us?
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can.
Okay.
So John, you might wanna alter the roll call to include them now?
Yes, so I'm gonna, Pam Rubenoff? Okay, Joe Murphy?
Here.
Excellent. All members are present.
Okay, great. Um, so, so the first thing I'll do is introduce our faux applicant team, which is gonna give me an opportunity to introduce to you all Brian Wagner, our new senior planner. So, welcome, Brian. Brian, as you all know, we have been, we have been waiting with bated breath for a, our third planner to rejoin us since this summer. And we are very, very, very lucky to have Brian joining us. Brian, if you want to say hi to everybody, this is our planning board.
Brian has been. Even under all the unusual circumstances, I can't say I've, I've ever started a job under more unique circumstances than this one. In fact, I, seeing as it started the first day that I started, I keep waiting for people to blame this on me.
You kind of wonder if you really have a job.
So it's true, Brian's first day with us was actually, we were having a, a welcome to the planning department breakfast and Rob came down and said, I think we need to figure out how everyone's working from home starting tomorrow. So yes, it was absolutely from, from day one, Brian has been in sort of this oddness with us all, but we figured we'd get him at least to this meeting so we could all say hi and everyone can connect a face with a voice and get to know each other virtually a little bit. So I'm gonna basically give you guys a, a sort of tutorial of how, how we're using Zoom. Jay, for the, for the purposes of you all, I'm gonna do a little bit more behind the scenes, like narrating of how we're doing things. So you see how it goes and so you guys can weigh in on how you want something to work, if you want it to work in a particular way. So I'm gonna start with sort of just describing what our roles are. I'll talk you all through, like I am sort of the presenter for you all today. Jay is gonna be doing like the screen sharing and document review. That's sort of a neat feature of the Zoom platform is we can go beyond the tiles of faces. We can actually be looking at a document together. And we also have the ability for, for you all as the planning board members to actually mark up those documents too, using some features of, of the platform. So honestly, the goal is to get you familiar with it and to honestly get us familiar with sort of running the backend of the technology on it too. So with that being said, one of the first things I'm gonna acknowledge about the Zoom platform in general is that there is a, there's an awkwardness. There's a, there's a stiltedness you sort of can't avoid in that you, you're, there's a way you read people in a room when you're there together to know you're not speaking over each other or to defer someone else to speak if you start to speak over each other. In Zoom, that's, that's harder to do. I will say that we've, we've sort of played with the idea that all communication should really be directed through the chair in case it gets unruly, even sort of the board members. With just people speaking over each other more than unruly in an argumentative sense, just unruly in a lines cutting in and out and the audio being hard to follow. That's not natural, right? That's not, that's not the way you all necessarily interact with each other. Last night, the town council made the call to say, you know what, the five of us, we're gonna try and just reform, talk over each other. And when it becomes an issue, we'll change our policy, we'll change it then to sort of make it more formal. But that's something for you guys to kind of think about through the course of this meeting is let's talk free form during it today and see if that causes glitches or concerns that make you want to put more structure to it. Okay?
Kayla, my box, on my screen, it lights up on who's, who's talking. So I mean, that's an indication who's talking and, and got the floor basically at the moment.
Yeah.
I don't know if everybody sees that.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, they do. And it works pretty well. But like, Steve, when you were just talking, you had the floor, so to speak, right? You had the yellow box highlighting your square. And then when both myself, John and Joe Murphy all sort of went to say something, it actually bounced in between the three of us very quickly, not sure who was the next one to go to. So like, if that becomes problematic, you all might decide it's better to sort of be funneling things through the chair if you're in a regular session meeting and it's starting to get confusing. It's, I think it's just good to know sort of what those tools already you might want to pivot to, right? So with that.
I'm not sure I have the same, I'm not sure I have the same screen. I only have a screen with one person on it, which is Kayla right now.
Ah, okay. So perfect, perfect, perfect. So, um, so the, the, here's our, let's do a, I'm gonna do a sort of tutorial on what you all see on your screens. So far as I'm, I think you see it. All of our screens look a little different. Joe, to your point, you have the ability to customize the view you see. And you can either see speaker view, which is the person who's speaking, you see their face only, or you can go to this thing called gallery view where you can see everybody's faces queued up in this Brady Bunch. So you find the controls for that in the top right corner of your Zoom window. You'll see this, this, this option in the corner that gives you an ability to change your view from speaker view to gallery view or whatnot. You want to give that a shot and see if you can switch it to this gallery view and anyone else who's in the same boat, see if you can play with those different views and see what, see what feels, feels right to you.
I don't think I have that. In my top right, I only have, I have like three different bars. There's a small bar, medium, and then a larger one. The smaller is blue. Um, and it just says talking, but it doesn't, if I click on the other bars, it really doesn't do anything. So I'm not sure if I have all the capability here.
Ah, yeah, that's a, that's a very good question. I am gonna ask Jay to do me a favor. Jay, would you, um, would you, can you demote my co-host capabilities and make me a panelist so I see what, what Joe and the others are seeing?
Try running his cursor to the bottom of the page.
I think he's gotta run his cursor up to that upper right-hand corner to get the menu to pop up.
Okay. Joe, I haven't.
To speak of you when you do that.
If you're in gallery view, we'll say speaker view, kind of toggles between them. So if you're in gallery, if you're in speaker, it will say gallery.
I don't think I have all the capabilities because I don't have any, even when I run it up to the top right, I really don't have any type of control bar.
Joe, how about the lower left? Where.
The lower left, I got a mute, unmute and a stop and a start video.
Okay, try that one.
Okay, now I have, the video is stopped. Can you see me?
Nope, but clearly we can hear you, but that would be.
Well, I'm on the telephone. I actually have the telephone because it said that my microphone didn't work.
Okay.
So maybe that's the difference.
That's, okay, that could explain it.
Yes, that, that could be, that could be what we got going on here.
But rest assured, I can see you all as you speak.
So, Joe, maybe we'll play with that another time, like offline and see if we could get that figured out for you because that's, I, I, I think the gallery view is a better view. It makes it feel a little bit more like everyone's in a room together and less like one person's individually speaking. But so let's, let's, let's start with that, right? So in the top, usually in the top right corner, you have the ability to switch your view between that speaker view and from that gallery view. It absolutely seems true to me that everybody has an ability to customize their Zoom a little bit, right? I think you can dock things maybe in different places. I have not played around with any of that, but if things are not where I'm describing them to be for you, in general, on the top, if you bring your cursor all the way to the top of your computer screen or to the bottom, you'll see a bar pop up on either side that gives you a little bit of control as a, as a planning board member in the meeting. If you're a member of the public on the call, you'll also see some controls, but they're far, far less. You actually will probably only see the ability to, to raise your hand to let us know if you'd want to speak with us or to put a question in the Q and A box. But so that's, when you're a panelist and you're looking at this, you have the ability, if you take your mouse and you drag it down towards the lower portion of your screen, you'll see where you have the ability to control your muting and unmuting of your phone line, your sharing or not sharing of your video. And then if you keep moving along that, you're gonna see a, a, an icon for participants. If anybody's not seeing these things, just interrupt me and let me know. If, with that participants plant panel, if you click on that, it's actually gonna open, if you don't have it open already, a different window and it usually docks itself automatically on one side of your screen or the other, but sometimes it just opens as a different window. And it's, it got this participants panel. Is everyone able to see that participants panel? So, great. So the participants panel gives you, when you're looking at it, you all are seeing that there's two options, right? You're seeing that there's a panelist option. There's sort of two toggles you can have. And then there's an attendees option. So this panelist option, when you're on that one, you'll see that list of names for members of the public who, who cannot see that sort of link or, I'm actually not positive they can or can't. It's a list of sort of the staff and the planning board members who are, who are in the meeting. If somebody is on that panelist column, they're on that list you see when you have the panelist showing, it means they have the ability to share their webcam. It means they can turn on and off their microphone on their own accord, just because they want to. Um, and it means they have a little bit more sort of control to act a little bit more naturally in the meeting. And that's why you all will find you all are always panelists and staff in the room with you, be it Rich, Amy, myself, Jay, Brian, will be a panelist too, so that we can have the feeling of sort of a nor, of a normal meeting to talk amongst ourselves. On the other side of that participants panel is this attendees column. You have to click on it there on the top. If you click on attendees, you'll see that there are a list right now of five people who are attending the meeting. And these are, these attendees are where members of the public are during the meeting. And they're where people go when they're not presenting. And so when people are in that attendee place, they're on, they're really experiencing a sort of different, a different meeting than you are, right? They're, they're experiencing sort of an audience view of this meeting. They don't have the ability to turn off or on their microphones or speak or interrupt you all. And so because of that, we have to be really, really, there are a couple of things we have to do really intentionally because of that, right? We have to make sure we have somebody checking. We have to make sure we have somebody checking that all the time because the only way we know if somebody who is attending the meeting wants to be heard, wants to participate in some ways, if they use that raise hand feature. Um, so in the meantime, you're going to find us to be like a little bit staff-heavy on your calls, um, and on your meetings because we're going to want to have somebody on staff whose real job is honestly to just keep monitoring the, the meeting room where and to make sure we're not missing anybody who's having problems, right? And they, so right now Jay is sort of doing that piece, right? He's going to be sharing the documents. If somebody raises their hand in the attendees link, Jay will do the technical piece of muting and unmuting them. Um, and he's going to sort of be like the behind the scenes tech guy to keep things going and to just keep monitoring what's going on in the room. That's going to free up you all, particularly John as the chair, to be chairing the meeting and dealing with the content you guys have to deal with and not so much worrying about where somebody is in an attendee link versus a panelist link, what's going on with their microphones. Instead, we'll likely do it that the chair recognizes somebody to speak and then staff will make sure that they are given the right authorities and the platform so that they can speak when we get there. Um, so that's just kind of a lay of the land of what we got going on here. So with that being said, Jay, do you want to do the screen share and put up our sort of bow visual, which is just the town hall property to, for the sake of having something to look at together?
Sure.
All right. So what, what Jay just did is probably, I will tell you, the coolest feature of Zoom in, in my opinion, when it comes to planning board meetings is we can actually share the site plans the way we do on the screens when we're in the council chambers together. We can do that. Honestly, I will tell you one better than we usually do on the screens because one, the members of the public in the audience are not in the back of the room squinting to see where somebody's pointing at something on there. They're actually be able to see it on their screen just as close and in as much detail as anybody would, as you are, as we look at them on our computers in the office. Um, so this is, we just put together a PDF of the web GIS printout of town hall. And so now we're going to talk a little bit about how you guys can interact with site plans during the meeting. What's going to happen is for now, staff is always going to be the one sharing that site plan, right? We're going to try and take all of the logistics pieces away from you guys as much as possible so that your meetings feel as much like your meetings as they normally do. So we're going to be sharing those documents the same way we load them on the laptop to go on the screens during the meetings. But what I want to point out to you guys are the ways you all can interact with this site plan during a meeting, right? So if we were here and say I was presenting to you about town hall, I might say, I'm going to ask Jay to do something to share, um, control of his screen with me. So I'm going to, I'm going to request control of Jay's document for a second. Okay, so. There with me while I queue this up for you guys. So do you guys see the mouse moving around the site plan page right now?
No.
No.
No, okay. Let's, let me do it different.
It was there before us.
See this?
It's, it's waiting.
Now we see it. Oh, okay. So basically, um, when staff is sharing the document with you all, if you bring your, your mouse to the top end of your screen, the top side of your screen, you're going to see in the center, there's this note that says you are viewing somebody else's screen, right? You see it in green. Does everybody see that up there?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. And then right to the right of it, you see this view options dropdown menu. And if you click on that, you're going to see these, this dropdown menu. When I ask you guys all to just click on it, um, and pause there because I'm going to describe the options you guys have. So more or less, if you go into those view options, those are the ways you can interact with that site plan. And the ones that I want to give you that points some attention to are you can the really sort of the best one is this annotate feature. So you'll see it about midway down the list in that panel. And if you click on that, it's going to open a toolbar. And is everyone
Yes.
able to do that? I'm going to give a couple more seconds. Anybody who's having trouble and needs some time, let me know. Okay, so this annotate bar that shows up, if you all mark up that, and I see Pam's written her name in the corner, you all can actually mark up that plan visible to everybody who's in this meeting. So the same way I put that arrow there pointing to more or less where the, where I guess it's over the tax assessor's office in town hall. You can use that feature to say, you know what, I'm confused about what's going on here. And if you're trying to describe to somebody in the Zoom meeting, say an applicant, where on your site plan you're trying to point to, this annotate, this is how you do it, right? You use this and you can draw, you can write, you can highlight things in color. So honestly, everyone should just like, feel free to play around with this right now because it's a great way for you to be able to draw attention to something you're trying to focus on when we're not all in the room and able to point to each other. We can still, we can still do it. An important thing, yeah, it's kind of cool. A thing to know about it. If you still have that annotate window open, you're going to see, you have the ability to undo and redo your comments, right? But you also see this clear button. It's probably towards the right of your bar. You have the ability to clear your drawings from what you've put up there. You don't have the ability to clear anybody else's. Jay and I have the ability to clear all of it. So we could go through, like I can go through and I can hit clear all drawings and you see now that the things other people have drawn, including Pam's name in the corner, went away too. But she can use it to bring back her things using her redo and undo buttons. But so that's sort of something to know. I think something if we end up doing these meetings for a long time that we'll want to sort of figure out is, is what is sort of proper, proper manners on that? Do you mark something up and then clear it yourself or do you ask somebody else to clear it for you? Um, but for the meantime, no, if you are trying to draw something on there and you draw it in a place you didn't want to or it didn't work out exactly how you wanted it, you have that clear function where you can erase what you've tried to do and say, hold on, let me try and show that to you again. Um, and that clear function will work. And if it gets unruly because a number of people have drawn over each other or whatnot, um, whoever is the staff person in the room can clear all of them for us. Thoughts on this feature?
Great. It's a really cool feature.
It is because you could say, you know, I, I was looking at that street adjacent to the property and you don't know which street that is. But no, like for instance, when I'm moving my cursor, nobody else could see my cursor, right? But you could see if I wrote a line, you know, because I can imagine myself saying, it's this street, it's this street. But then I could just put a star there to say, that's the street.
Under, under spotlight, you also have an arrow that you can use.
Okay, yep.
I like the zoom feature.
What's this feature?
It's the top under view options.
Yeah.
And, uh, increase the zoom on it to get a closer picture. And then you can use your cursor to, uh, go to the lower corner if you want, because it, when you increase the size, it won't all fit on the screen. So you can move it around and get the different points on the plot.
And you know what? Actually, Steve, I'm going to point out something you could do with that too. If you wanted to, say you were zooming in like you're talking about to be like, I, I really want to look at the, these parcels down here at the end of North Up Street, right? And you wanted to zoom to that, you can actually also, you could, I'm going to do it now, for example, I am, I'm going to request control of Jay's document. Jay is going to give me control, which means I am, I am now moving things around on Jay's screen, but you all could do this too. And then if you do that zoom ratio, there, it's zoomed for everybody, right?
Nope.
Okay. Well, now we learned something new. There we go. Okay. Zoom ratio only controls it on you, even if you're controlling somebody else's document. I was hoping it might not. Now I have to undo that.
He shared it with you. If he shared his, um, no, it doesn't.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking if I had control of his screen, I might be able to zoom in for everybody, like to Steve's point, if you wanted to draw.
Are you wanting to back off? Do you want me to get rid of the, uh, the view? Are you seeing the fact that I've blown up the screen?
No.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah. So the zoom, so it seems like the zoom only ever controls what you're seeing on your screen.
Yeah, that's good.
Now, if I do it, does that change?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can see it. Okay, that's cool.
Now I'm doing that directly in Adobe. I don't see the view options, uh, in Zoom that you guys are talking about.
It's on the top of the screen, all the way up top.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Middle-ish.
And I think, I'm going to tell you guys, this is, this is what, I'll tell you, this is like what we have been learning in Zoom is it's very hard to understand what somebody else is seeing on their side. And there are like a few different levels of permission in the Zoom room and they all kind of come with a different suite of things. So I think my, my guess is Jay, I think because you are the one sharing your document, you don't have the, you don't have the ability to zoom in your own view of it, but you could zoom in the original. Whereas Steve is looking at a document on your screen and he can zoom in his view of it, but not everyone else.
So Kayla, with that said, and when we get into the next session at the end of April, uh, are we going to give Jay, is Jay going to attend the meetings with you by which he's going to control the screen that way? Or is it, are we giving it to the applicants, engineer, or lawyer, or somebody else?
I, yeah, I, we've, we've batted this around a few different ways, to be honest with you, and I would like to hear your all, input from you all on it. My, my feeling on it initially was yes, empower everyone as much as possible. And having played in Zoom a little bit more, I, I have quickly came around to more of Jay's line of view on this, which is for the beginning, let's keep it close to us so that we understand exactly what's happening. And then if in the future we're doing this for several months and we end up with applicants who have sort of the comfort level to do it, great, otherwise we, we will generally be the ones zooming in and, and changing things around. But if an applicant is capable, we'll allow them to join us in manipulating things.
I concur because even in a regular meeting now, when the applicant, whether it be the lawyer, the engineer, um, they, they fumble a little sometimes trying to get up on the screen, what they're looking for, so.
Yeah.
I agree. They usually need Kayla to help them.
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah. And I think that, I think that honestly, I mean, I think the best example is if we think about how, how many things can sort of quickly go strangely wrong or, or challenging, right? How it took us 20 minutes to get to the place where we had our, just our planning board members who we knew all were trying to get into this room, into this room, the way they, they should have been. Everything we can do to keep things more predictable on the technology side, the better. So basically with that being said, now that's a little bit on sort of the, the primer on, on sort of how you interact with site plans and how the communication piece kind of goes. There are sort of two other things I think would be helpful for us to do today on my, from my sort of point of view. And then honestly, whatever is helpful for you all. Um, the two other things I think are helpful are, we have a few people who, um, are not real members of the public who are in the meeting as members of the public. We have, um, Lynn and Carol from the planning department, both on the call as attendees. But I wanted to actually ask them to sort of, or any of the members of the public who are here who might want to, to raise their hand so we can work through sort of how public comment works. And then I want to talk about sort of the Yeah. And then we'll talk about the procedure for, for public hearings in general. And, and those were sort of the things I wanted to make sure we all got an opportunity to talk about tonight. And then anything else you guys have for questions. So um, with that being said, maybe Jay, do you? So right now, let's go, let's have you stop sharing your screen and we'll go back to the, the speaker or gallery views people have their default set as. Thanks. So we have Carol and we have Carol with her hand raised at the moment. So is everyone, so I want to pause there and I want to ask, is everyone have their sort of participants panel open and they, they see that, how they can see that Carol has her hand raised and Colleen as well?
Yes.
So a, a cool thing to know about that, one thing we worried about was if there are a lot of people in this room, how are you ever going to know when people's hands are raised? Um, and what you can't see because there are only a few people in this meeting with us is people who raise their hand float to the top in the attendees list. So you all as planning board members, if you have that panel open, will always see who is in the room. People can change their names as they come in and they can put in alias, a first name, their whole name. It's, it's at their discretion. But you'll see that list of people who are in the room and you're also going to see that if somebody wants to speak, they're going to float to the top and they're going to stay in the order their hands were raised. So that's helpful, I think, when you guys are working through taking public comment on something. You'll know that, that, that order of people, so far as I have seen it, appears to stay in the order of how people's hands were raised. It's not alphabetical or anything when someone raises their hand and you can see who they are. So for example, John, when you want to recognize somebody to speak, you can recognize them verbally by name, say, I'm, I'm going to now recognize whoever. And then just ask staff to, to unmute them and we will, we'll do that and then let you know, okay, this person should be all set to speak. May I?
So with that said, Kayla, um, so, so let's try that. So Carol, uh, who's in the audience, you have the podium.
Can I just, can I try something real quick before we get out ahead of ourselves?
Yeah.
Lower Lynn's hand and I'm going to ask Lynn to put her hand back up again. And I want to see if she comes in under Colleen or if she comes back in where she is currently. So Lynn, can you raise your hand again?
She's waving forth.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, so we'll go to Carol. Carol, are you there?
Yeah, Jay, you have to unmute her. Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you now.
Yes.
Can you hear me now? I had to unmute my, um, first of all, this is lovely to see all your faces. Being an attendee, I kind of feel a bit like I'm in purgatory because I can see and I can't talk. As an attendee, as a member of the public, it's wonderful. I can see everybody's faces. I think this is a wonderful tool and you guys are doing an awesome job.
So can I ask, uh, the attendant a question? Carol, do you have your video on?
I do, but from what Kayla tells me, um, the public are, are not allowed to be seen.
Okay, okay. I was just, I was wondering that. Thank you.
I think because it'd be too busy on the screen, right? You could have a hundred people showing up or something.
You know what? It's a little bit, it's a little bit of both. It first started as a, as a number of people on the screen because, um, once people are sharing their webcams, you can't favorite any webcams. So if there were a hundred people in here, the seven of you would just be lost in the sea of them. And at any given time, it wouldn't necessarily be you all that are there. We sort of wanted to try and replicate the experience of if you're in the meeting, you're looking forward and you're seeing the board members faces. You can see them sort of interact. You can see their reactions. You have a little bit more of a human connection.
And as an attendee, I don't need to see everybody else's faces. I want to see the panelists. I want to see you.
And the second reason we do it is because Zoom bombing is a term we're all getting familiar with, um, which is when people join a Zoom meeting with an intention not to participate productively in the meeting, but to interfere with meeting happenings or generally disruptive. Um, and so Zoom bombing, there's a scenario where people, the, the ultimately, the biggest concern is that people are putting up potentially inappropriate material or offensive material and that the use of a webcam potentially inappropriate material or offensive material and that the use of a webcam by someone on, who just enters on a publicly available link.
So. A feline Zoom bomb.
Kayla, then this is Amy Goins. How will we control that with the use of the Q and A or feature?
The one just popped up.
I was just looking at the Q and A and Jamie made some comments. So I was just acknowledging Jamie's comment.
Yeah.
My concern is that are, are members of the public going to be able to continuously pose questions on the Q and A feature?
No, and so, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a good point. So with the Q and A feature, the role of the Q and A is that it's sort of a technological backstop. In, in short, the Q and A, so I know Pam's familiar with it. Some of the others are familiar with it, right? But there's this panel that pops up where attendees in the meeting can type a question and it'll pop up as a written question for you all and it can come out of order. They don't have to be recognized to do it. It'll just pop up there. We, I am inclined to keep the Q and A because I think it is a backstop when we have problems with members of the public who are trying to be heard during a hearing. It's a way that if you're having problems with your microphone, you can use the Q and A solely to tell us, I am trying to speak and I cannot be heard here, because we want to know about that every single time if that ever happens, right?
So, so then you or John, someone will announce at the beginning of the meeting that the Q and A feature is to be used solely for, you know, informing staff of tech issues. It's not to be used to pose substantive questions to the board. And if someone does it, is, is staff going to be monitoring that, noting that someone has posed a question and informing that person they need to wait for public, the public hearing to begin?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and Amy, I, I, I've been monitoring the Q and A, so I've already responded to several that Jamie Murdoch made. And I've kept him private to him, just as a means of, you know, the comment. But, but you're correct, I can also comment where everybody sees my reply.
I can see something that you marked private, so you should be.
No, I, I did it because there were just, there were lessons learned right here in what we're doing. That's why I did them as private. That's all.
So as panelists.
Jamie just came in and he, he had a point about Kayla Gray's title. And, and that's all. And I said, thank you. And I could see that Kayla adjusted her title early on. So it was, again, it's a learning process, but I hear what you're saying, the bigger picture, I think you're right. People should have, we, we'd like to hear them. And if they cannot be heard, then we'll make the, you know, the mention that they go to the Q and A at the bottom of their screen or wherever it sits on their screen to ask the question.
Well, they won't be part of the public record if they sit there either, correct, Amy?
Well, the public record really is the recording of the meeting, the transcript, which I want to talk about in just a second. And I think the public record also has to include any questions posed on the Q and A, whether it's, I, I mean, in other words, I think if somebody is requesting a transcript, not the minutes, but if somebody's requesting a transcript, I think we also need to provide them with a, you know, printout or e-printout of the Q and A feature. I want to talk about the transcript. And also the minutes should reflect if any questions were posed during the, you know, Q and A feature. And I'm talking about, let's say, someone has had their turn at the podium, so to speak. Someone has said their piece during the public hearing portion and then continuously keeps posing questions on the Q and A feature. That, that should be reflected somehow, I think.
Yeah, that was, that was my follow-up question, because we could get bombarded with question after question after question. And if we don't directly answer it, is that going to be a problem if they, if somebody protests the meeting?
No, I mean, the, the, what we have to do is provide an opportunity to be heard in the same way that we would as if it were an in-person meeting. So someone has one turn at the podium, sometimes we let someone speak a second time if they have something new to say. But at a, at a regular planning board meeting, you don't get to, you know, hold the floor indefinitely. So I don't think we have to go above and beyond the process that we normally provide. We do, and I, I just want to emphasize again, this may have been said already, but tonight, it's okay. But we do have to get used to identifying ourselves by name. Especially the first time we speak. You know, people on, on a call can recognize voices. I think planning board members should always identify themselves when they speak. It's going to be, it's going to feel very odd, but I think we need to do it. I reviewed a transcript today of a test call that I was on with zoning staff. And I have to say, it is, it is not at all what a stenographer would produce. Now, we don't have a stenographer at our meetings. I think the plan, Kayla, is still to have staff produce the same minutes, correct? In other words, the, the unofficial transcript that Zoom produces will not become our minutes. They would be produced to someone, you know, in the event of a court appeal. But in the event of a, an appeal to Superior Court, that would need to be transcribed by a stenographer. I mean, it is just in no way a substitute for an official transcript.
Amy, this is Maria. So with the Q and A, then would it probably not be a good idea for us to answer? I tried answering one of them, but to answer them privately, we should answer them live, correct? So that everybody.
Yes, I don't want planning board members answering side things. I think staff should handle all the inquiries. Staff should handle technological, you know, i- issues. And, and Q and A should be acknowledged somehow on the call, because remember, people participating just by telephone. And, and that is who we need to think about. Because I think a, a lot of people who attend our meetings are, are going to be able to participate only by telephone. So we need to make sure that's reflected in the audio somehow, but correct? I don't want planning board members, you know, even if it's a very obvious question and you, you, you know, you really want to point out a, a question that should be obvious or an answer that should be obvious. I don't, I don't want you to.
Amy, I was under the impression also in my head that, you know, we would only use the Q and A to read the question perhaps during the public comment period, so that it's kind of structured, so we're not taking questions as they come up. And we, we read the question and then the panelist, the applicant, staff, whomever gets to respond verbally or on video for everybody to see. And, and I, but there is a little balance there between how many questions are we going to take in a row? And do we, do we then encourage the person to speak instead of type, you know?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm going to, Jay, I'm going to jump, I'm going to jump in over you on that. Yes, and I would almost even go stronger than that, which is unless the Q and A should almost exclusively be used if you cannot figure out how to make the audio work on your telephone or your computer microphone. And at that point, the first thing you should write in that Q and A should be, I am trying to but can't. And we're going to try and troubleshoot you into actually speaking at the meeting. And if at that point, they still cannot make that work, and we've given it a minute or so to try and get them unmuted speaking as they normally would in a hearing, then we could potentially say, if you want to type your question here, we will read it aloud, read your name and read it aloud into the record and allow a response. But, and I think we use it as a, as a, as a last resort functionally, right? The goal is, is that the Q and A should be where we say, please keep your substantive comments for the public hearing or for the public comment period. If you're having technology difficulties and can't communicate with us, use the Q and A to let us know so we can figure out something different. But yeah, I agree, we, it can't become a place where people think they can drop their questions on an application to you all or even their, or out of, sort of out of the box question about something unrelated to you.
Or even their comments.
Right.
Can I be difficult?
Absolutely.
Of course.
So you have someone who constant, who's barra, who's, say, bombarding, but they're putting question after question in. They either don't want to pay attention to our direction or they don't understand. They're asking relevant questions and those questions aren't being answered for whatever reason, and they feel more comfortable being behind the keyboard and not on the phone or not via voice, the video or anything. From a challenge standpoint, shouldn't we make a, doesn't that put us in a position to? We should answer it if it's becoming.
To me, that's someone shouting from the back of the room. I think the chair should rule that person out of order and that should be reflected in the record, so.
Can't.
I completely agree. You kind of maintain some semblance of ordinary meeting procedure and the chair would have that opportunity in an ordinary meeting. And if, if, in an ordinary meeting, you've got to have enough gumption to stand up and comment. You don't have the ability to sit back anonymously and, and still be heard at a, at a keyboard. So you're not really changing the structure of the meeting at all by doing that.
You come to the podium, state your name and your question.
Okay.
Okay. And so another thing that I've been sort of thinking about, and this is, one thing that I am learning it takes to make these meetings productive for people are a couple of things. One, the meetings are slower, but they just, they just are. It takes a second to transfer in between people to make sure somebody came through, whatnot. The, the meetings tend to move a little bit slower, seems to be an unavoidable truth of Zoom. There are a couple other unavoidable sort of truths of Zoom. One of them is you're dealing with not only the technology of the platform, but you're dealing with the technology in everybody's individual homes now. And so there's a piece we have to sort of get, get some practice at doing in live time troubleshooting. We had a TRC meeting this week and we had to do a little bit of live time troubleshooting with people. Maria smiled because she, I think because remembering it. But we had to do a little bit of live time troubleshooting with applicants who were on the call, thought they should be able to speak and we couldn't hear them for one reason or another. And so we, we sort of ended up with something that worked there, like a script more or less to sort of coach them through a couple of simple troubleshooting pieces. Since then, we've written those troubleshooting things into the instructions that are attached to all of the agendas so that you can refer people to them if they're having challenge. And the second piece about that is inevitably, there's going to be a little bit that, of that, that needs to happen. For the council, they have had Abel sort of take that script and use it to help so that he can do sort of a quick troubleshoot with people, asking them to make sure they're muted and unmuted, giving it a minute, asking them to, if they can't make their computer audio work and they're on that, asking them to hang up and dial in. If that still continues to not work, asking them to leave the meeting completely and try and come back in. But talking people through tho- those troubleshoot moments is something that I think is an inevitable piece for us. It's up to you all how you want to do that. John, I don't know if that's, that's a thing you want to handle in sort of chairing through the meeting, is talking people through that with talking points provided to you? Or rather, you'd rather defer that to somebody on staff? That's, that's a choice for you to make. We have a, we have sort of a scripted piece on it that go, that goes out on that piece that I can give you. It's the same thing we gave to Abel, so for him to, for him to give it a shot for the first go. But there's a lot of little sort of, a little, a lot of, just a little pieces to it that we're all still trying to figure out here, right? It seems generally, the more structure you can put to the meetings, the better. And so we're trying to replicate the structure of your normal meetings. And so one thing in that, that I was thinking about with public hearings is, we all know that there's a general concern sometimes that you might, people don't always know when they're going to speak, right? We've heard that, we heard that over the summer a little bit with people, right? When do I get to speak at a public hearing? How does all of this work? Am I just sort of sitting here? I think that's even more of an uncomfortable thing when you're sitting potentially in your living room at the meeting, not knowing when it is you get to speak and how the heck you'll even speak through this computer contraption you're looking at in front of you. And so one thing that I think helps is if we can break the public hearing into the sort of the steps that normally occur, right? First, and so I think about this, when you all hold public hearings, they happen in a very specific method, right? The applicant presents material, the planning board members ask a first round of questions, the chair opens it up for public comment, people are recognized individually, you recognize speakers, you don't necessarily do rebuttals to each one of them with the applicant, but you let all this public comment happen, then you allow potentially one response from the applicant. And you, you structure them in a way when you're running your meetings. And so keeping that same structure and explaining that to people when at the start of the public hearing is, is a good practice for us to get into. Along, it goes along the lines of good practices being saying your name before you speak, good practices being roll call votes. And another good practice is setting the expectations for what is about to happen before you start going into it and people start getting a little nervous that maybe their moment to speak is coming and maybe it will be stressful or maybe they'll lose it. Neither of those things will happen. We'll try and make it as stress-free as possible for people to speak. And we'll also make sure that we hear from everybody who wants to speak. But setting out sort of those steps to people to say, we're now, this application contains a public hearing. When we get to the public hearing, we will step through that in a specific order. You will be given your opportunity to comment after the applicant is presented. The planning board has asked a few preliminary questions, will then open it up for public comment. And just introducing to people what's going to happen to them when you're going to run it through just beforehand. So people are kind of familiar with how you'll be moving through those hearings. That's sort of my, that's, that's sort of that last piece on this. We have, separate from that, we've been working on a user's guide, more or less, something that helps explain to sort of applicants how they're going to interact with their site plans and how they're going to describe things to you all, how you all are able to interact with things and not, and how members of the public can all be doing it. But it's, it's a heavy lift of a thing to get right and each meeting format seems to change a little bit. So it's been taking us a long time. In the meantime, I am sort of typing up some like best practices for people. And I, I don't know if you all want me to like share those with you. I've been doing them for sort of townwide things, but I'd be happy to sort of, I'd like to put together for you guys before the April meeting, a little bit of a cheat sheet on what the order of things are and some of the things that we might be inclined to forget, but are important are like stating your name before you speak and just some of those things that are a little more uncomfortable to us, but we have to get in the habit of doing.
Kayla, I just want to make you aware. I found out today the state is going to be doing some kind of statewide Zoom contract and I think it may be free for cities and towns. At some point, we're going to need to put you in touch with DVR because I think the work that you've put into all this is something that probably should be shared with other cities and towns.
Yeah, well, thanks, Amy, because I feel like I've been eat, sleep, breathing virtual meetings for a couple of weeks here. I think all we all have, but I, I did know about that, actually. So I was, I've been talking on the backside on, on that, about that group purchase and what we would want those features to be, for that to work well for municipalities. But yes, I think I actually have been put in touch with Liz Tanner at DVR for that, for that purpose.
Kayla, during a, a regular meeting, if we have technical difficulties, say, I understand the, the town manager lost, had a tree in his yard and he had to call in. But during a meeting, if we say this, we have a thunderstorm and two or three members have a power interruption and their, the site goes down for them, what will happen during the meeting? If we lose eight, three members and don't have a quorum until they either can get back on, do we pause the meeting? What do we do?
We'd have to. We can't, we can't do any business if a quorum is lost.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and Steve, I think there's two, I'm going to give you two sort of examples. Cause I'm, I'm, I think examples are a good way to understand things and we're in a middle, the middle of a lot of them. When we had the TRC meeting on last Wednesday, we, we did lose one of our members. One of the TRC members dropped off the call at some point. And after the fact, I was saying it was, it was kind of unnerving because. When we were in the meeting, we had applicants in there. We were moving through things. We were doing formal business. And we realized that we didn't have one of our voting members anymore because we'd called on them for sort of an input a couple of times and they hadn't said anything. And then finally we got to sort of, I think it was a vote and it was clear that they were not present any longer. And that was very unnerving to me. Is unnerving to me because I didn't know when we had lost them. We didn't know sort of what had happened. And so then we went through it again with the town manager last night at the town council meeting. So the lesson we learned from the TRC meeting was. If you are a voting member, so if it's one of, if it's one of the planning board members. Or legal counsel or the planner or the engineer in the room, if it's, if it's a member of this committee or your support staff. We're going to have to get good on a phone tree. And the other basic, my initial thought was we have an email open, right? Either myself or Jay's email would always be open. And if you got disconnected, shoot us an email as soon as possible saying, I got disconnected from the meeting. Because we don't necessarily know if your computer, like Steve, if your screen just froze up on you right now. I wouldn't know whether your computer had glitched out or whether your internet had gone down and you were no longer here on the call. Um, and so we sort of asked that you reach out to us as soon as you know you're disconnected. I think ultimately that actually probably has to be a text message because if you've lost power, the way. We saw happened with the town manager yesterday, he can't, sending an email might be trickier. I know most of us have email on our phones, but a text message might actually be the thing that we, is most reliable at that point. In that scenario with the TRC meeting, we've lost one member. And we just were really clear to express that we had clearly lost one member. Still had a quorum and would continue to move forward with the record reflecting that we had lost one member. As of officially the time when we knew that they were not there anymore. If we lost a planning board member during, during the, the meeting. I think, I mean, Amy's right. You, you, you really can't continue the meeting if you lose a quorum. More so than that, when we're all getting familiar with how this all works. If we lost one or two people, I would say we would absolutely want to recess the meeting. Take 10 or 15 minutes and see if we can figure out what happened. If we lost you and we lost you because you lost power and internet and cell phone service at your house and it's, it's over for you, you're, you're, you're in the dark over there. Then, then it is, and we still have six members and we likely may still move forward with the meeting. Amy, I'm curious actually, your thoughts on that, if, if there's a problem with us doing something like that. If we were to lose one member and still had a quorum. Is that, in my mind's eye, that's equivalent to sort of one person leaving the meeting at a certain point. And you just have the record reflect the time you know they have left and would continue on. It'd be mostly if there's a quorum of people, basically if a quorum of planning board members couldn't get into the meeting or something happened, you would absolutely have to postpone.
Sorry, the, the end part there, I didn't quite catch.
I said, if a quorum of planning board members was, were lost, we'd have to post, we'd have to postpone it.
Yes.
There's just no, no other option. There isn't, there isn't a board there to do business.
So do we have the ability? And, and this is what you were just talking about. Do we have the ability to suspend the meeting, take a break to see if they can rejoin?
That's what I was thinking. Like honestly, we, we could recess the meeting for 10 or 15 minutes, like a, a certain amount of time to see if we could resume it. I think we just have to be certain, basically set out that amount of time to the public clearly too, right? We're going to take 10 minute pause here. The meeting will stay live and open. Nothing will be occurring except for us trying to get people back on board.
Yep.
I would, I would say no longer than 10, because that 15 is a long time.
Yeah.
For a stagnant screen.
And maybe 10 is too long. I mean, I, I don't know that.
Five minutes might be sufficient. If you, if you, if it was just a blink and your power went off and came back on, you lost the internet. I mean, within five minutes, I would think, as long as you had power, it would, it would be back up and you'd be able to sign back in.
I would say we should, rule of thumb should be if you lose, if you get cut off, you text someone right away saying. I'm trying to get on instead of trying to get on for 10 minutes. You know, I would notify Kayla or someone with a text message, hey, I'm lost power. I'm trying to get back on.
That's a good point.
Other thoughts, other thoughts people, people have around any questions, things you're thinking about that. Anticipating in regular session meetings, things that you're. Still feeling like might be a little unsteady under your feet or, or anything you want to sort of do a, do a quick sort of seven of you think on. It looks like Amy's got something she wants to say.
So, and, and I know you've, you've gone over this a little bit and put it on the agenda, but I'd, I'd like to hear it again. So, so I understand. The people in town who are low tech, you know, limited capabilities, let's say they just get. A notice right in the mail. They don't typically go on the secretary of state's website. You know, they're not computer literate. What can those people do? Those people can call, can make an appointment to ask questions, to review plans.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely right. Exactly. So people who are, people who are being notified of the meeting at the end of the month or any of our meetings. There, the notice will also tell them to contact the planning department to view a site plan or whatnot, right? You all know that we hyperlink all of our site plans and staff comments to the agendas. That's, that's sort of old, old hat for you all. That is, that's coming to be a good practice of ours now that we don't have to learn that new. Because a lot of people, a lot of municipalities are learning how to do that new right now. But when we are sending out our notices to people, they're going along with a, an invitation to either. View the site plans on hyperlink to the agenda or contact the planning department to set up an appointment to view them physically if somebody is unable. But that brings me back to sort of come full circle on this. People who are not computer literate, who may just be joining by telephone. At the start of our meetings, we're going to need to give a, a quick sort of summary to them on how they're going to interact. Because it is fundamentally different than the way somebody who's looking at this computer screen with you interact. It's also the reason Amy is, Amy is so steadfast on the identifying your name before you speak. When you're looking at the cast of characters on their faces on the screen, it's easier to, to see who's speaking and get used to it. If you were just listening in and you had only called in on a, on your phone today. You wouldn't have the ability to sort of connect faces and moving lips up with the voice you're hearing through the line. It's a little, it's, it's a, it's a very different experience. They won't be seeing the site plans when we do that screen sharing feature. And they don't have the ability to drag their mouse over and click their raise hand button. But there is an ability through the phone to raise your hand in this meeting on the telephone. So even if you've just called in to this meeting. You show up as a call in user on that attendee list. And dialing star nine on your phone raises your hand. And star six on your phone mute and unmutes you. So there's a little script that is going to go in the beginning of the meeting too, right? That says, if you are joining us on the Zoom meeting, you'll raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand button. You can generally find that in these two places. If you are joining the meeting by telephone only, you're going to be using the star six and star nine commands to control your interaction.
And for the first few meetings, if not for all of them going forward, we should repeat that when the public hearing is opened. The other thing I want to discuss just briefly as a preview of coming attractions is. The governor's executive order 20 dash zero five that was issued on March 16th. Allowing remote meetings for essential purposes is set to expire tomorrow. We anticipate and have been told that it will be extended. And I think that's fair to assume and rely upon. I think the order may be clarified or modified in some way to provide some additional clarity. On what constitutes essential purposes. And I know Andy from our office has been. Really heavily trying to influence that and specifically trying to provide that planning board meetings constitute essential business. I just want to let you all know as soon as, as soon as. Whatever's going to be issued is issued and publicly available. I'm going to pass it on to you, but just stay tuned.
Um, Kayla, this is.
Thank you.
Kayla, this is Maria. Um, I, I think your idea of a cheat sheet is a very good one. If possible, even some kind of tutorial for people, including a link for them to check bandwidth. Because as you alluded to in the TRC meeting, that traffic engineer, he was garbled. We couldn't really. Understand much of what he was saying and it may have been something minor that was needed to correct it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Caleb, before you go any further, can we ask the chair? And since this is a practice session, I just want to acknowledge. We have someone with their hand up who's Jamie Murdoch, who has also asked a question. And it's been out there for a while. So I'm going to ask Jay to give, to open up the mic for Jamie, if he is indeed available and hear his question directly. Jamie, can you hear us?
Yep. Uh, I hear you fine. I forgot what it was. I think I was just raising my hand when Kayla was trying to show, you know, what it was like when multiple people raised their hand. But I, I think, I think things look pretty good. I have a couple of notes. I was just going to send Caleb afterwards. You know, that are just sort of aesthetic things. Everybody's microphone sounds. Quite good, except for Pam Rubenoff's is kind of muddy sounding and, and a bit reverberant. But everybody else is coming through pretty clear.
Good. Thank you.
And, uh, you know, lighting's good, camera. I guess the webcam placement on a couple of people could be a little better so that their heads were just. In, in the top half of the frame instead of the bottom half, but these are, these are not really important. But overall, I, I kind of, I kind of like this. You know, venue, it makes meetings pretty accessible. So that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments. Kayla, sorry.
Oh, I don't know. That's okay. And so I was, I think, I think that's perfect and great. Um, so. I'm going to, I'm going to point something out to Jay right now because I. I, I basically am sort of living live time. We're, we're living live time figuring this all, all out together. Jay, when, when somebody after an attendee speaks their microphone, they keep their ability to mute and unmute themselves. I think I noticed it with Carol, um, that she could keep speaking off and on, and I had unmuted her. And I think it's actually a special function you have to do. You're nodding your head. You found it, didn't you?
I just, yeah, I just, I realized.
Like we have to remove their speaking capabilities, not just mute them.
Yeah, yeah. And I realized that before when Carol was hanging out for a while and then I, I was playing with the differences and it's, yeah, uh, disabled talking. I believe that's the function.
So, um. Jamie, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a note about, about Jamie. Going to honestly just say thank you to Jamie Murdoch because Jamie has been a huge help to, to the town staff throughout this. Jamie has been attending all of our practice sessions and he has been working with staff actually behind the scenes beyond that. To help us all get better feedback and to figure out exactly how we're working through all these Zoom meetings. So really, thank you to Jamie for coming and, and giving that feedback tonight and for, for everything he's been doing to help. A point I want to make on backgrounds, which reminded me when he brought that up is. Something the town council has done and you'll see Jay and I have these backgrounds that make it appear like we're sitting in the town council chambers. That is something basically we have this staff background, which appears like we're sitting in the audience. To say, get up and present to the council. That's what these backgrounds originally came from. The council right now also has a photograph. It's all they are, is they're basically a photograph that is put in as a virtual background. You can see Pam has a virtual background unless she's actually on a charming beach. And we, at least I never know. She could honestly be there with that deer. So. We can provide you all, if you want, with a background that is, that is universal. It's, it would be functionally, it's the photo of the background behind the days in the council. So it's, it just shows the town seal, um, and basically where you would be sitting in the meeting. You all can.
Background.
I thought the beaches were closed.
Oh, yes. Good point.
I think it would be easier for the public who may not be familiar with the planning board members to see that background.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's, it's, it's helpful. What I'll do is, um, we, we have it. And so I'll email it around to. To people. I, I say we have it. We'll have it by the end of the week. We'll email it around to people. And so then you all, to do that, I'm going to tell you quickly how you do that. In the bottom left-hand corner where you have your video control, there is a drop down slash pop-up menu. And if you click on it, it has this option that says choose virtual background. You can choose your virtual background as ever you would like, as Pam is displaying for us here. Or, and oh, there we go, Star Trek. So you, you can use one of those or you can load in a photograph that we send you. And once you do it, it sort of becomes your default. Like right now, I don't load up this picture every time I come into the meeting. My, my profile in Zoom just attaches, this is my normal background. So, uh, that's, yeah.
Uh, I will note that Jay emailed me the background in the middle of the meeting and I went in and tried to load it up. And it did not want to work. I don't know whether it's the lighting in this room or the computer didn't want to do it. But it was just horribly glitchy and I, I got rid of it and just went back to where I'm sitting. So.
Yeah, it's a.
Work with everybody's computer or, or whatnot. And they may want to try it out. If, you know, come into the meeting a few minutes early or something like that.
That was, that was a problem I had. I tried to put a virtual background up and it, it just broke the whole picture up.
I think I've, at least was, I think saying you need a green screen.
Yeah. My, my laptop's pretty old and so the graphics capability aren't great. The, um, you know, the controllers and so forth. So I actually have to use a green screen. For, to make it work, but my son has a much newer laptop and it's capable of doing it without that. So I think it kind of depends on the laptop.
I think the biggest, the biggest function with, with issues with that is your backdrop. So if you have a plain wall or there's no depth to behind you. Like looking at Steve, you can see into the back of his room. That's, that's problematic. That window behind you, Brian's probably. Throwing it off the color variations. If you can get a plain, as plain a background as possible, I think it goes better.
I'm going to, I'm going to do this as an example.
Yeah, that's the problem I was getting.
So this is me and I've just turned to a wall that actually has a piece of art on it. And now it, it catches, it catches the piece of art sometimes. So if you have a busy background, it can't tell the difference between what it's projecting and what it's trying to show in front. It, it doesn't get depth. So, yeah, so exactly simpler background. And if you have a. Faster computer, the better. But so I could.
I'll put a requisition in.
Perfect. So, um, the other thing I want to say is to Maria's point, which is people might not know who the planning board members are. You'll notice when you come in, some of us have, have information beside our names, right? So Joe Murphy, Joe shows up and it says Joe Murphy, comma, planning board. People, some people do and some people don't. It's a good practice to get into the habit of, of titling yourself when you come into the meeting with your name and your role for the meeting. So you can do that because if you are on panelist link, right? If you have your participants' window open on the bottom of your screen. You have yourself on the panelist view and you right-click on yourself. You, you have the, the ability to change your name. And so I would suggest that's sort of a thing, a thing to do in here. I believe Zoom remembers you after you've come into the room a few times, but the first few times you might need to go in and rename yourself. It, it would be helpful if people did name themselves with their, their name and then their position, planning board member, you know. So that it becomes clear to people who they're actually, who that person is. And that's sort of the technology we're going to use.
Okay. Okay. A little later than I thought. Okay, I'm just reading a Q and A, but this one we can we can address offline. It's a Jamie Murdoch question on Zoom. So, any other comments or questions? And Jay, if you could send out the background photo to everybody, that'd be great. So we're all universal and as much as our technology will allow us to adapt to it or not, we'll find out.
Sorry, Pam moving off here. I'm curious as to why I had a hard time getting through.
Me too. So, um, Pam, I think you got in and we were we were so excited to have everyone in that we just started moving, but we had a couple of issues that happened with tech technology, and I I don't actually know what the fundamental issue was initially. There were a couple of things we thought might have gone wrong that didn't appear to be what actually was going wrong. So, I am not positive why when you, particularly why when you went off of the link on the agenda, it it didn't launch for you right away. I I'm worried that it might be if your whole, if you're attending different Zoom meetings for different platforms and whatnot, the cache of your browser may be holding on to some different information or something because it 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 doesn't seem like it's coming from the other side, like the link works for within the same sort of twenty-five minute period of time. I think all of the planning board members on this call use the agenda link to come in. And Elise couldn't get in a for a few times. I think it took a while for us to get Joe Murphy in. And and you, I know, were 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 sort of locked out, and it told you there wasn't even a meeting occurring. That is really concerning to me, and I'm gonna do some research into that because that's that's that is the sort of thing that we really want to make sure never happens during a regular meeting because if it happens particularly to to any of you, we know to troubleshoot with you all, but we don't know to troubleshoot with with Joe Neighbor, who might show up on the call too. And if he is going to click on that link and not coming in, that's that's something important for us to understand why.
Kayla, I did not come in during from the link on the agenda. I kept getting a note back saying that the meeting hasn't started. I used the telephone number on the agenda, and I also got the same message there. I finally went to my email where you had said given a different link, and that's what I came in on.
I was gonna add too, when I couldn't get in, I I called the numbers on that dial list and it asked me to put in the ID. I'm typing in the ID and it says, please enter ID. And I'm entering in, it says, please, and then it hung up on me. So then I tried another number, and I got the same result. It it wasn't recognizing that I was trying to type in the the meeting ID number, and it would disconnect me.
Kayla, do you have any clue about whether Zoom is like overwhelmed now or?
Yes, there's that. There's absolutely that. Part of it is that Zoom has been inundated, where we as a as a nation and as a world are testing testing the web platforms that used to be used in far less often scenarios than they are right now. Um, we are we get information from Zoom through our licensed account and through some of our other services we've used recently describing the fact that their systems are pretty taxed right now as well. Particularly, this was of interest with, um, this isn't actually specific to Zoom, but we were when we were using that teleconference line originally for our first during COVID meeting we did in in March that that system, we've actually had an incredibly hard time getting people to call into it, any meeting that starts on the hour. Because so many people are trying to call into so many of those services, they will often just tell you the phone number cannot be completed. It it just cannot connect it, and it's that is related to the system itself being inundated. And so Pam, the question, and and really, it's a question, I think, in everybody's mind of what what happened to tonight. I I don't know, and it's gonna take us doing some research, I think, with with Zoom on on what actually happened there, or people who know more about Zoom. We've got a little a Zoom, a little bit of a Zoom working group of emails kicking around from people in different municipalities who know or who are all puzzling through this and learning things as they go. So we'll see what we can do, and I'll get a report back to you on sort of what we what we learned from it because it's something we need to learn from before we do a public meeting.
Kayla, what's the purpose of the individual links for each planning board member?
Yeah, so the purpose of the individual links to the planning board members is that when you come in with those individual links, you're gonna come in with your name and information about you already pre-populated and with your permissions already in place. So when you Yeah, so when
My name.
Yeah, like, and that's because on the backend, when we build each one of these meetings on the on the website for Zoom ahead of time, we set all a bunch of settings in the meeting, and we invite people to come as panelists. And if you get that panelist invitation, when you come in, you automatically come in with your webcam wanting to work and with your microphone wanting to work and as a panelist, so you can speak freely. If you come in off of the agenda link, you come in as a a public attendee, and we have to find you in the other attendees to the meeting and move you over to this panelist group. It it works either way. If you use the individual links that go to you, it's easier for us because then we don't have to scroll through and and be be basically monitoring the attendees to find you all when you come into the room. You come in with the permissions you should have. It's it's basically just a simpler way for us to manage it.
I got in tonight. Did I come in as a member of the public and you moved me over?
Yeah, so when you came in, I bet you came in and you saw sort of one format, and then it closed out and said you're relaunching as something else. Did that happen to you?
That I didn't even. Yeah, because I tried using the link that you had sent specifically to me, and it just said the meeting hadn't started.
Oh, I was waiting waiting for meeting to start or something.
Yeah, I got the same thing, yeah.
And so when this is working the way it is supposed to work, what should have happened is that prior to seven o'clock, so I I actually launched the meeting, started the meeting at about quarter of seven in what they call a practice mode. And in the practice mode, it just means anybody who's a panelist, anyone who's coming in with their special invitation comes into that room and can come into it ahead of time and set up their stuff and make sure their microphones are working and whatnot, and we can all say, okay, everyone's here. We're gone for a, let's start a meeting. I so I it's very odd to me that those panelist links did not work, that that one of the functions of having them is supposed to be that it gets you into that meeting room even before, even before it's gone live. And that that's not how it performed tonight, so we just have to figure out what happened there.
I tried to turn up and it wasn't working.
Yeah, Pete DiStefano was on on with me, and I was saying, Pete, I'm getting nervous that it's just you and me in here. Um, and so then John showed up and it took us a little while to get everyone. So, um, I'm gonna do some looking into what we can figure out, and I'll send you guys an email so you know as as well as we do what we're learning.
Hey Kayla, one quick thing that I've learned of my time of doing Zoom, at the bottom where it says like share screen, and then there's the more box. If you click on that, then it talks about the invite. So in our company, we had a few people that were always dropping off, so we would lose them. So we made sure that they were put in as a contact. So say if Pam all of a sudden dropped off, you could go to that invite her and her contact would be there. And she would almost have a window pop up on her screen that says like, accept call. And it would bring her right back into the to the conference. So you wouldn't lose time of someone trying to load up again and and get everywhere, but I believe you have to load them into the contact beforehand prior.
Good to know. Thanks, Pete. Yeah, that would be helpful.
By the way, one of Jamie Murdoch's comments suggested that if you have a light on your face and a dark background, then the virtual mode would would better accept the virtual mode, whatever picture we're putting behind us.
So light on our face and a back
A dark background.
I know, I keep on wondering why my hair is doing funny things.
Mine too, Pam, mine too.
I find that men with not much hair not have this problem.
All right, well, so I mean, last comment, oh, there we
Oh, see, that's what that's what happens when I, you know.
Yeah, you disappear.
Yeah, yeah.
Might not be a bad thing.
Well, this has been an interesting session, no doubt. Clearly, we had a lot of discussion points about the technology, and I think it's fingers across for two weeks away when we have our regular session, the first regular session meeting. Uh, but I think we'll get through it, and I mean, this is the new normal for he knows how long. Um, but we gotta work it through. Any, um, any final thoughts, comments, staff, Amy, board members?
Pam here.
Yes, Pam.
I don't, how should I do that? Um, I'm just wondering if we should try to get on at like six thirty for a meeting to just
Yeah, we could try earlier.
Yeah, I think, um, Amy, I I sort of, I've been I've been thinking about this from a meeting's point of view. I think I would like to have us basically say we're gonna start the meeting at six thirty with a work session to get everyone situated and then start the regular meeting at seven. I I've been wondering, I don't know if you've if you have a concern about that, but I've been wondering about whether or not when we pull everyone together early in some secret little space, if that's something that it's someone's gonna raise a flag of concern about at some point.
I would not suggest noticing it as a work session if the purpose is solely make sure everyone's on the call because to me, that's the same thing as coming in the room. Some of us come in early. Some of us now no longer have the long commute excuse to come in late. So, but I think joining, yes, join early, ten fifteen minutes. Make sure you're muted, I would say, or if it's unmuted, keep it to pleasantries, right? So let's not get in discussing business.
That's fair.
So, perfect. Let's let's do that. It's I was I I am I am inclined to always say fifteen minutes, but after what we saw tonight, I agree with you, Pam. Let's let's say from six thirty on, there will be a staff member with a meeting present for you guys to come in and make get get situated in before that meeting. So if people want to come in early and we have fifteen minutes of trouble, then we'll
And that way we know if we can't get in after six thirty, something's wrong.
We can get in the car and drive to the town hall.
Okay, um, since we're nearing the end of the meeting, absent of any other comments, I'll give everybody one more bite of the apple. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? All right, we have a motion for Maria because your gold box went on first, and I think we have a second from Steve. Any further comment? All in favor?
Do I have to ask people their names for each of the motions?
I am going to say for the motion to adjourn, we do not need a roll call, except if somebody opposes adjourning, you should state that quickly. But for all other votes, I would need a roll call vote.
Okay.
My role as the secretary or is that John's?
I think we had indicated that, um, that you, Pam, would be doing that as the secretary.
Okay. I didn't know if that was just for that meeting or if that's always, okay, I will get to know your names really well.
Why, thank you, Pam. Okay, um, all in favor?
Steve Damasi says hi.
All right, good. We got some enough folks there. Great. All right, folks, thank you very much. Amy, thank you. Kayla, very much. Thank you again, and Jay. Nice meeting you, Brian.
Hi, everybody.
Take care. Bye-bye.